Okay, it is now four thirty. Calling the order, the Trophy Club Mutt One Board of Directors are meeting November fourteenth. We have a quorum. First item on the agenda pursuant to section five fifty-one dot oh seven four of the Texas Government Code, Texas Open Meeting Act, the Board of Directors may deliberate the employment of a new general manager. Will enter into executive session at four thirty-one P.M.
Well done.
I practiced it all week. Okay. It is now eight thirty-nine. We are returning to regular session. No decisions were made in executive session, so we will proceed to our next agenda item. Because no items were taken on two-way. Citizens comment, this is an opportunity for citizens to address the board on any matter whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The board is not permitted to take action or discuss any comments made to the board at this time concerning the item not listed on the agenda. The board will hear comments on a specific agenda item prior to the board addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or the time limit determined by the president or presiding officer. To speak during this term, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Citizen comments should be limited to matters of which the board has authority. See, we have one citizen that'd like to present, Mr. Brock Harwell. Please come to the podium, give your name and your address, and we'd tell you, I don't know if you caught doing that. If this is not an item that's specifically listed on the agenda, we will not be able to share any thoughts back with you. It would have to be a future agenda item if we, so please announce yourself and please begin, sir.
Well, I'm Brock Harwell, this is my wife, Vicky, and we live here in Trophy Club at picture five, Snore Drive. And back in May, we had a, an issue with the sewer backed up into our master bedroom, bathroom. And long story short, we ended up having to call the city to come out and turn it off because dig down in there. It was all mud and water inside there, and I knew there was electronics, and I didn't want to get electrocuted. And plus, I didn't want to mess anything up. They came out, turned that off, and getting a plumber to come out. They did the camera, or scope, or whatever you want to call it, and measured, and the city, the line had separated from underneath the street. And they said that it was the city's pipe that had dropped. And so then I brought it up to the city, and they came out and did a scope or a camera as well, and said they found the same spot, but it was like right at the street, at the curb, and they marked it, and I've got printouts here if you want to see it. They said it wasn't, it's not the city's issue, it's our issue. And I don't understand that. They've come out before, not sure, I don't know who came out, but someone did some street work, have a new curb put in. You can see it on picture here as well, I don't know what they did, but something was done there. We had an issue with our driveway a couple of years back. They dug out, as a water main had broke on the city side. Replaced it, and then approximately two years later, there was an issue with the, the, uh, separate, the dropping. And it dropped like four or five inches, and I believe Mr. McMahon came out, inspected it, and it appeared when they dug out, they didn't fill it in correctly, and put enough dirt to build it back up. And everything washed away and went down, down, I guess you'd call it downstream. And that's where this location is right now. And so that's why I don't think, we just want to get this thing done. It was our bathroom and bedroom is still a wreck, we're trying to get.
We don't want to get it fixed until the sewer line's fixed, because we don't want it to happen again, and have it reoccur and have to get it, go through all the remodeling and everything all over again, so.
So we're just trying, just trying to get, get this taken care of.
We'd even talked to the mayor and the city council at one of their meetings, and they seemed to not even understand why this was being told that it was our responsibility, because if it's, if three different plumbers have told us that it's the city's line that has dropped down, and it's at the street, and our line stops when it meets that part of the sewer system at the street, that's the connection to the city sewer main, then we don't understand why they're wanting us to pay to have the city's street fixed. They're saying the pipes under the street are our responsibility, but we don't own the pipes under the street, so.
And having to redo the street, I've never heard of that before, as far as residential owners. So that's what we're here for. And we just want to get, you know, just want to get this taken care of, because we'd like to get our house back in order, because it's just total wreck right now, because, I mean, you guys come in there and you want to look at it, I can see it.
You don't want to see it.
Because it's, it's a total wreck.
Okay.
And we just like to get this resolved.
Okay, well, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. As I mentioned before, we really can't engage in any commentary on it. We'll speak with staff, and then we'll figure out the next steps.
Okay, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much for commenting.
Jerry kind of, ETA? Timeline, yeah.
I think, as I understand it, the staff would be happy to do a presentation item on the next board agenda for this one, which would be the way to bring it back so that the board can address it in the meeting. If this had been on this agenda, then they could talk with you about it, but the way the rules work, they can only just take it as input right now. You and I had this discussion six months ago or so, so.
Yeah, it's been about them.
So, you know, we'll, we'll prepare a draft agenda item if we're directed to do so, and come back and give a presentation. We can put the video up on the screen and let them take a look.
Yeah, because you also have a still copy of the.
The video that we sent you.
Not really, that was back in June, something like that, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That'll work.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Sorry you had to wait so long.
And we apologize that you had to wait so long.
Thank you. Y'all, good evening.
You do the same, sir. Are there any other citizens' comments?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll proceed to consent agenda. All matters listed as consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Directors and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda, will be considered separately. Three, consider to take appropriate action to approve the consent agenda. A, October, check rare should be October twenty-first regular meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda, items A and B.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Vice President Rose, second by Secretary of Treasury Flynn. All in favor indicate by raising your hand. Motion passes unanimously. We'll go to item number four. Consider to take appropriate action to appoint two directors to serve on the audit committee. Staff.
Mr. President, this is an annual activity where we've had the auditors in all week. They come back, and I want to say it was January sixth, week of January sixth roughly, that they would come back and give a preliminary, a little more detailed report to an audit subcommittee, give the preliminary findings, and then if there's any other questions that come up in that discussion, then they can make those refinements, and then they come back at the January meeting, which I forget the date on that one, Stephen, it's.
I think it's sixteenth.
Sixteenth in January, too?
January starts twentieth.
Okay, so then we'd bring back the audit for a presentation on the January twentieth meeting. So it's typically two board members who just come and listen to the presentation of the auditor.
And the committee, you don't have to meet one time?
Do we have a committee right now already in place?
It's established annually.
Yeah, last year, I think it was, I know I did it.
Did I play on it, too?
Both of you did, that's correct. I think it was.
I believe the last two years you both have.
Yeah, I think the last two years it was you and I.
Are you interested?
Nope.
Are you? Would y'all consider being two thousand twenty again?
Not opposed.
The treasurer is not a player.
The treasurer's opted out.
I, I, I would opt out, I would graciously ask to opt out unless there is no other options.
We'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to have Director Wilson and Director Flynn as our.
I thought it was Director, hold on, hold on.
Sorry, what is he? The president?
Don't look over here. Give her one job.
That's why I'd like to make a motion.
All right, yeah, different names.
I'd like to make a motion for President Wilson and Director, or Vice President, sorry. Vice President Rose to serve on the audit committee for two thousand twenty.
And we have a motion by Director Caston Way to appoint President Wilson and Vice President Rose to serve on the audit committee for two thousand twenty. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Secretary of Treasury Flynn, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by raising your hand.
I thought we were going to vote no.
Wouldn't matter.
Yeah, the die was cast.
Well, he shook his head no, and he said it came down to this, so that's why I said your name first.
Okay. Item number five, this discussion possible action regarding noise level at the wastewater treatment plant. This is an item that Secretary of Treasury Flynn and I put on the agenda. There's a gentleman.
Mr. Hall?
Mr. Hall, that have experienced some noise related to, at his residence because of some of the things that's going on at the wastewater treatment plant. You want to add any color to it, Secretary of Treasury Flynn?
So, we all might remember, this goes back several months, back to earlier in the year when this first came up. We had our noise study done, which, as I recall, basically said it's within tolerance, both at the plant level and at two different spots outside the plant, one at Mr. Hall's and then one another street. It kind of went dormant for many months, it might be a number of reasons for that, but it now came back. He contacted me again, we're neighbors around the corner, sent a number of texts again with noise, sound. So I went by three different occasions from my house, and the noise level and where I was was just outside, we, you know, the gates, if you will, and it's coming from the same spot. And we know where it's coming from, it's that area there, and it was loud. The next Halloween night, happens to be Halloween night, my wife calls me in, as, as the crow flies to our house, it's not all that far, from the back deck, you could hear it was pretty loud, our back deck, which is, you know, not next door, it's a ways away. So, there's been some discussion, I think, about potential solutions that Carmen has brought up in the past. And I think even Frank, we talked about this when we had our little meet and greet, if you will, about maybe another option there, so I, it's time we address this again, is why we're bringing it forth.
If I may, I guess I have two pieces of updated information for you. First off, Frank and Mike worked together, we hired an outside contractor to come and align all of the motors on these air blowers, which are related to keeping the sludge from going septic, that's effectively what they do. They are outside, and blowers make noise, that's the truth of it. However, and Frank can chime in on what they did, they, they found that there were belt issues on all of them, is what I understood. Well, maybe, maybe you could tell them about that.
All the belts were replaced, and the motors were, motors were realigned, and there was, it took care of the noise. I mean, there was a big difference Monday, I came into the gate, and you could hear that. So, we, we knew we had a problem, we had a, we had it scheduled for Wednesday for them to come in to do the work on it, and it's, the noise is considerably less.
When you talk about the belts, what, where are we talking specifically, which belts?
On the blowers, there's two belts on each blower. We have four blowers, three are running all the time, and on startup, and even, this was to the point where the belts were going bad, they needed to be changed, and any type of moisture, it slipped, it needed to be adjusted, tightened, and new belts, and it's.
Go ahead.
Oh, I thought you said.
Yeah, well, what I'm getting at, are these the ones out in the outside of the plant? Or is, is there, is one of them in that one area, that's, that, the one that we've all kind of had in question?
Yeah, all of these are the digester blowers that are in the vicinity that everybody's in question about.
That one area behind, between the buildings where we used to have that, you know, trailer that was there that helped, we think, at one point in time, abate the noise a little bit, and.
Yes.
So those have been addressed?
Yes, they've been tuned up. So we got a specialized mechanic to come in and do kind of a vibration analysis, alignment, it sounds like we replaced the belts. And there was a definite reduction of sound at the blowers. You guys are welcome to check that out, but it's happened since this thing got put on the agenda effectively. So, you know, from my perspective, it probably means we just need to have someone come out and do that periodically. We've developed some other contractor relationships or services, for example, our bar screens, our fine screens. We now have an annual maintenance contract with Huber, who's the vendor for that equipment. They come out semi-annually and take a look at it, so it's a, it's kind of a fine tuning of a mechanical device. We depend on those devices a great deal. So I'd be interested to see if you're the same observation now that you heard two weeks ago on Halloween. So that's one thing that we wanted to bring up. Secondarily, we did have a building priced, and we are, so that would include an awning and a place to hang curtains. I don't think this covers the curtain costs, as near as I could tell.
I don't believe so.
But it would end up being effectively a forty by eighty engineered metal building, and the price tag on that would be about sixty grand. We feel like that would meet a lot of our needs and significantly dampen the remaining sound coming from those blowers. Our budget for this is, this is a fourth of that, basically, I think it's, was in the thirteen thousand.
Yeah, there's thirteen thousand available right now, and for capital this year.
Is this the one, Frank, we were talking about, where it's the actual overhang? And as, as we talked, I remember that we weren't necessarily doing this to abate that noise necessarily. Yes, that, we, we think it's going to help, right? But the other benefit to the mud was, we have, you know, these new systems, where you want to get undercover to some extent?
New equipment, we have new six-inch pump, new generator, and hoses and other things, and it also covers our chemicals.
Curious that we, you mentioned we have a quarter of that amount in the budget. Given the, what it sounds like, the necessity of these items, curious why didn't we get the total amount in the budget to address this issue?
We really started off with a study, and we've shown that we're not doing anything wrong at the site.
No, no, so.
So that's happening. Now, what we budgeted for was the cost, and we got a cost estimate from our contractor on that, to come and hang rails, so you basically have to pour posts, put up a set of rails, and hang these heavy drapes on them. So you see those in a lot of oil drilling operations, where they're, you know, it's, it's a loud impact sort of thing, but they're maybe doing it near a neighborhood, so they will hang up these sound curtains to dampen the sound. Even a big, just a big water well has those types of requirements. So the thing that we have in the budget was enough to drape a curtain around there and isolate those motors on a day-to-day basis from our plant operator. So I, I budgeted that as a safety item. In this case, it did, the complaint did go dormant for a while, but the leaves have started to fall off the trees, and I think that has a tenuating effect. And then, sound travels better in cold air than in warm air, I mean, that's the truth of it, and it's been cool. So I think all those things kind of combine, but I think maybe the root thing was that we, nobody recalls really going through those motors and tuning them, making sure the belts are aligned. If you ever had a, like a water pump belt that's loose or misaligned, I mean, they wind like crazy. It's a, and I think that's a big part of what we're seeing.
No, no, and, and I completely understand and appreciate, I guess the other need, Frank has described a completely separate need that's apart from the whole noise complaint. So I'm curious, why didn't that get into the budget, so?
It didn't come up before the budget was done. When did we do our tour?
That was, when you and I walked and was talking about the different situations there, that we discussed it amongst ourselves, and then you decide, you said you wanted to speak to the board about it.
And, and we wanted to get a, a number, an estimated cost. So this is not budgeted at that level, but it's a way to kill two birds with one stone, would be my notion. Now, when you look at this number, this doesn't include the cost of the curtains. It's, I don't think it includes, and I'm only reading it on my small screen, because my computer's dead over there. But I don't think it includes a concrete floor, we're just leaving it gravel, right? So it'd be posts with a slanted top like the other side of the sludge press building. We have a similar awning over there, and one of the things in the curtain solution was the cost of putting up these racks to hold the curtains. We asked these folks to give us a cost for this, where one of the walls would really be a place to hang those curtains, and separate that sound from the pump, the generator, and the hoses. So getting those big, you know, hoses out of the sun will be good for them as well. Right now, our spare membrane rack is sitting up against the fence under a, under a piece of yellow plastic, and so it's, I'd like to get that out of, out of the sun as well.
A ten thousand dollar membrane rack.
So what's the total, what's the total cost of this?
Okay, so we just had a first blush of the cost, this is not a designed thing, this is like, let's, let's just put together a metal building roof posts, and it's estimated at sixty thousand with some, with some contingency. That wouldn't include the curtains. We have thirteen or so budgeted. We can come back at mid-year, we can do this and just come back at mid-year and make a budget adjustment, but that's a doable thing. We come back pretty much every April and do a budget amendment anyway. So in my mind, it's a, it's a doable thing. Because it's over twenty-five thousand under our procurement rules, over twenty-five thousand, I'm sorry, but under seventy-five, at least on this quote, and we'd have to get three quotes in order to comply with our procurement policy. If it goes over seventy-five, it's got to go out to bid, I think that's the number I have.
But you said where it's sixty, which you feel somewhat comfortable, the curtain piece, if you had to estimate that additional cost, are we talking five grand, ten grand, twenty grand?
That, that's probably only going to be five grand, it was the structure, right, to hold up the, the post.
So it's most likely to come in under seventy-five?
Yes.
Best estimate as we sit here tonight? Okay.
I would have a question on the curtains as to lifespan versus putting up solid surface with, on the building, and doing a dampen, dampening within the building.
We can certainly check into that, I mean, that's options, we, we just, you know, we knew this was going to be on the board agenda. Tried to put together some concepts for you all to, to respond to your inquiry.
So I get the impression now, talking about pulleys alignment and V-belts, that must be a multiple series of V-belts that are on it, like four or six or something like that on, on a pulley, and they're not direct, so we don't have direct drive motor blowers. In other words, the motor's not directly driving the blower.
Correct, they're belt-driven.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess from my perspective, it'd be great to see a, an estimate of the total cost. And then, this is one person I'd like to see come back on the next agenda.
Absolutely. I mean, yes, I mean, I, we're, to me, it's a win-win situation, where whether we like, you know, whether we agree about the noise level, I mean, I'm hearing it from the back porch, and there's no trees, so it's there. But the second thing is, the bigger, my bigger concern is quite frankly, this equipment that we have invested a lot of money in, and we're not protecting it, so why would we not do this, given a reasonable budget to do it? I know we got to find it, but I think it's reasonable to do that.
Sir, we'll bring back a more refined set of information for you on the December sixteenth meeting, I think, I think it's sixteen.
Yes.
What, just one more final question, what is the timeframe to get this structure, build, build this structure? Is it something that an outside company comes in, puts it up, and kind of, that's how it all works?
Yes.
I think it's, we're really talking about just like cement footers, steel beams, metal roof, I mean, it's, it's a carport almost, but.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number six, consider, consider to take appropriate action regarding employee health and ancillary benefits for counting the year beginning January first, two thousand twenty, ending December third to first, two thousand twenty. Staff.
I'd like to go and address this one here, we're at that time of the year where our health insurance needs to be looked at and make a decision based on the budget and, you know, the needs of the staff here. Our insurance broker, Dean Casey, went out and got us some more quotes for our health insurance, which is up, and also annuity, which is our SCD, LTD, then his vision and dental. So the recommendations for the staff is to actually stay with both the same carriers that we, or the three carriers that we have now, which is UHC for our medical, Matt Life for LTD, SCD, and Humana for the rest. Both of these, the increases are what's within budget that we budgeted for this year. So we gave the, the board here some, some numbers, so they can kind of look at what the renewal rates are, and to kind of show where they are within budget. Anybody has any specific questions, I'd be glad to address it.
So the existing coverage is, the renewal, even though it increased, it's within budget, and it's cheaper than the alternative?
That's correct, well, it depends on which way you look at it, so when it comes to health insurance, you can always dice this apple a different way and play around with all kinds of different options on there. So if you look at different carriers that are comparable, same kind of policies that we have now, which would be Lou Cosby Shield on there, then yes, we are under that and able to keep the same current policy that we have now. And then, you know, our job as a staff is we try to, or as management here, is try to make sure everything stays within budget, and we try to prepare, you know, each year for what the increase might be, because unfortunately, insurance doesn't go down year over year.
I, I don't know, I guess to me, it's a no-brainer, if it's a renewal, it's what everyone already has, and it's cheaper. I don't know what there is to debate or discuss.
So just, just for transparency, the only one that's not cheaper on here is the new company for the dental and the vision, but parts of it's cheaper, other parts aren't, which is the life that the, that the employees pay, so.
What's the net increase?
Every employee's difference is based on age and how much they want to, that they want to pay for.
What's the net increase to the district?
For the district here, we have. So I have, it is twenty-two thousand currently, and it's going up, I'm sorry, twenty-two hundred currently for one, going up to twenty-three, so you're looking at a thousand or not, um. Sorry, I'm trying to look at the math on here, it's hard to see on this. So the total's going to be, there's six thousand dollars difference for the year for this policy here, not including what the employee, that's just the district side itself, but that's within under budget from what we had, budget, which is a fifteen percent increase on, on these policies here.
And so the recommendation from staff is to keep all policies the same?
Correct. There's some comfortability and, and, and benefits to keeping the same policies that you have, instead of switching every year that we have.
You don't have to look at changing potentially doctors and things of that nature.
And there's also good stuff for like the health insurance, if we are self-funded there, that you actually get more contributions going back to your overall pool, the longer you're with them. So there are some benefits to the district also.
Entertain a motion?
I move that the mud stay with UHC. I move that the mud stay with UHC All Savers for medical benefits for the employees and also stay with Humana and MetLife Insurance for the auxiliary benefits for the employees.
A second.
We have a motion by Vice President Rose for our, for the district to remain with their current benefits providers. UHC All Savers for health and.
Medical.
For, yeah, health, that's right.
For medical.
Medical? Okay. Medical benefits and MetLife for ancillary benefits.
Humana and.
And Humana.
Say again?
Humana and.
Humana and MetLife for the other ancillary benefits. It was seconded by Director Caston Way. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. We go to item number seven, considering take appropriate action regarding October twenty nineteen combined financial and various reports, A, combined financials, B, combined, combined variance.
Uh, this would be real quick, since it's the first month of the fiscal year, there's really nothing there to talk about. I mean, we'd be just finishing up our fiscal year, so the, you know, I, I would move that we approve the combined variance A and combined financial, combined financials A and combined variance report. A more detailed report will be coming next month. Again, we're only a month in.
We have a motion by Secretary of Treasury Flynn to.
I'll second.
To approve the October twenty nineteen combined, combined finance embarrassed reports, seconded by Director Chapman. Discussion?
On page thirty-one of the packet, maintenance and backhoe skid loaders, we got some money back? Eight hundred and fifty-six dollars, is that correct? Do I read that right?
Thirty-one.
On page thirty-one, item number one thirty-five, fifty-five, one oh five dash zero two zero.
Yeah, so that would be a transaction that got refunded back on the P card, on the statement, so yes.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Thank you. Paid for pizza.
Any other discussion?
Did I miss something?
Not worth repeating?
Okay.
All in favor indicate by raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously, reports and updates, general manager monthly report updates, A through E, I mean, yeah.
Mr. President, the brief report is in your packet. It was brief for a reason. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to try to address them, but outside of that, I think everybody is ready to roll.
Hi, are there any comments or questions on the general manager's report? Staff, do you have any questions or comments? Look like we closed out the year with a bang, a hundred and fourteen thousand gallons sold. I'd be interested to see what our financials look like at the end of the year. CFR dire predictions by our, our finance magic holds true.
Always conservative.
As he, as he ducks his head behind the computer, my guess is not.
We are, we, we're looking in better shape with a very good, strong, solid September finish. And we also got a nice true-up from, or also water, that went in our favor.
All right.
Which was the difference, actually.
Maybe in the morning.
Yes.
A new used one.
What is our final, what is our final guesstimate at this point?
Somewhere on the north side of about a half a million.
On the north side of a half a million?
Somewhere around there, somewhere around there. It's not official yet, we'll work on the orders, clean it all up, but that's what we're, we're looking at. It's, we're a little, little on the.
Seemed like I remember some just crazy nut just saying, I really don't think things are as bad as we think or we need to raise rates. I wonder, wonder whatever happened to that guy. He's probably in the same asylum somewhere.
The reserve policy will appreciate it.
Yes, on his own boat, eating, eating pizza that was paid for from a backhoe.
See, if you didn't have a conservative finance person, it wouldn't look as good though, see?
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's see, future agenda items, we, the item.
Mr. President, could I just add one extra thing?
Absolutely, sir.
I didn't put it in the report anywhere, but we did as a part of, do the true-up of the last bill, convince Fort Worth to pay for the staining of the fence around the meter station. It took a while, but it finally got done.
So they're, are they, they're just gonna cut us a check?
We, we, we asked them to just put it in as a part of our monthly bill as a credit. I think that's how it got handled, or it was in the true-up.
Sixty-eight, sixty-eight thousand dollars for the water.
It's, uh, it's five thousand, isn't it? Five thousand and some change? It's five thousand and change. We still haven't gotten anywhere with AT&amp;T and the little easement enclosure over here, but.
We got to a few different countries, though. We're, we're tracking it down.
Also, when Stevens did, some of that half a million, we did get about a hundred and sixty thousand dollar credit in our true-up from Fort Worth.
Which does make up the difference from what mine is, I'm just saying.
Oh, I, and I think, and I think, really, the big credit goes to the staff on the, on that excess because operating short-staffed and being conservative about what you do, save the money. So I think that's where the credit goes.
Thank you, thanks.
Cop out?
No.
Okay, so we have the item for the.
Fifty-five Sonora.
The fifty-five Sonora as well as the, the structure to bring back on the next agenda items. Anything else? Anyone wants to add?
At some point, we need to put dollars against the reserve policy.
So that is my goal, actually, is to go ahead and basically finish up the Gatsby now that we're working on with the auditors right now, finish up the Gatsby part, get that piece out, and then go ahead and start working on the targets for the reserve at the same time, now that we see better numbers here.
Okay, so will we see that in December, January?
I'm planning that being in my financials in December. How much of all of it, how we're gonna figure it out, I'm still working on the audit right now. They're gonna be, they, today was the last day here in-house, they finished up early. So they're gonna go back now and start finishing up their end there and they're gonna get over the government-wide financials, which then gives us an ability to calculate the net and, and go further from there.
Okay, good.
So hopefully mid-December, depending on how quick I can get it back, I'll, I'll do my best to get at least the Gatsby done and then we'll do, go from there from that, or January.
Any other items for future agenda?
I, no, but I have one final comment, if I may.
Hadn't stopped anybody else?
There you go. So I want to echo Bill's comments about staff. You guys are awesome, just really awesome, everybody. It's a pleasure working with you. Steven is going under the knife, we all know that, again, and he'll be out and it is one of the board directors, me, direction to don't worry about this stuff, okay? You got a good staff here, all right?
Ditto.
Worry about yourself first. Don't be worrying about whether this report got done or this, it doesn't matter, okay? Take care of yourself.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
And tell Bill Rose that reserve policy, get around to it when you get there.
I'll know that also be obviously anyways.
In June.
Yeah, we can get there before June. Okay, next board meeting scheduled for December sixteenth, twenty, December sixteenth, six-thirty. After no other comments, I'd like to adjourn to Troph Club, Mud District, nine eighteen PM.
No other comments.
Meeting, say again?
No other comments.
We said that already. Meeting is adjourned.